Two, one. Good evening. This, the 22nd meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. We're going to ask if you have cell phones, would you please turn them off or put them on vibrate? Tonight's invocation will be led by Rabbi Motzen of Near to Mid Synagogue. If everyone would please stand for the invocation and then remain standing for the pleas of allegiance. Rabbi?
Let us pray. Rebunos Shalalem, Master of the Universe, you taught us in the Book of Proverbs that lev melachim biyad Adonai, that the heart, the thoughts, and the deeds of leaders is in your hands. And we humbly submit this notion that everything in this world is in your control. At the same time, you've taught us tzedek tzedek t'irdoof, that we should pursue justice, that we should never stop until every man, or woman, or child is accounted for and cared for. Please, God, bless the council members with the wisdom to balance the recognition that it is not upon us to complete the task, but at the same time, we are not free from trying. I'm sure there are times that, deep down, some council members may feel that their work may be insignificant, but please, God, remind them, teach them, and inspire them to recognize that the highest aspiration of every man and woman is to emulate you. And you, God, care not only of those who are quote-unquote "important" or headline news, you, God, care for the orphan and for the widow, for the blade of grass and for the leaf blowing in the wind. Please, God, remind the council members, inspire them, to recognize how integral and important their work is, how although it may not feel like it, their work is godly. And lastly, please bless the council members, bless them with health, bless them with success, and bless them with peace, and let us say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to thank Rabbi Motzen for the invocation. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Cohen Scott, Dorsey Henry, Schleifer Milton, Pinkett, Burnett Bullock, Costello Stokes, Sneed, Clark, Mr. President, Weaver Quorum.
Thank you. This evening, we welcome Mr. Jonathan Moore of Rowdy Orbit Media, who will be speaking to us briefly. Go ahead.
Okay, well, thank you for having me here. I appreciate the time and the opportunity. My name is Jonathan Moore. I'm the founder and CEO of a company called Rowdy Orbit. And what we do, we train individuals who have criminal backgrounds, nonviolent offenders, to learn computer languages over a one-year time span. And what we train them to become are quality assurance engineers that understand JavaScript. And to give you more depth to what exactly a quality assurance engineer is, is that you have, anytime you develop a product online, you have your designers, you have the actual people to actually build it, and you have the people to test it. And the reason for them to test it is to really break the code, to make sure when you do a specific function online, that it works and it do what it's supposed to do. So, give you a prime example, if you press one button, what happens when 10 million people press that button at the same time, all at a rapid rate? So, you pay individuals to sit there and to find ways and discover new ways to break this code and to somewhat be, somewhat be very curious, and how can I invent new and different ways to make sure that this product, once it reaches a marketplace and a consumer does something completely different, that we've already solved that problem? So, we do this over a one-year time span. And what we really focus on is, in order to achieve this objective, we had to start working with this company called GitHub. And GitHub, if you're not familiar with GitHub, is the largest repository of code in the country, in the world. So, in order for you to get a job with an employer, an employer says, "Show me your GitHub", which is your portfolio work. So, we're working with the African-American Employer Resource Group called Black the Cats to develop the curriculum. We're also working with GitHub's Social Impact Team. And so, we said, "We're training them also in a hard skill, but also, in order to get them, get people to understand a new reality, we have to readjust the mindset and alter the mindset." So, we're still working with CCBC to do that specific aspect, where over a one-year time span, we're really diving deep and really getting into case management, so that way we can start to keep life at bay and really understand people's, individuals', the barriers that are holding them back from really achieving what success and goals are all about. And so, we're entering our second class in March 2018, no, April 2018. We're going to have 30 students, and we're really focused on getting them entry-level employment, once they graduate, and they have the opportunity to, they have the opportunity to generate revenue through internships as well as build a portfolio. And the way this works is, in the morning, is coding instruction, and in the afternoon, we actually go out and get real-world contracts that meet them where they are. So, they have an opportunity to really focus on building their portfolio work. And we're a nonprofit, but the organization is called Greater Than, and a for-profit is called Rowdy Orbit, and Rowdy Orbit is a placement agency for these individuals. So, that way, we're going to have them for one year, and Rowdy Orbit actually becomes their first employer. So, once they enter the marketplace, now they have one year of employment with real-world work underneath their belt, and we're seeing that this is a huge gap in the marketplace when you talk about quality assurance engineers. And we hope to fill that, we're hoping to fill that void. And we're actually looking at a point now where, to work with employers, to figure out, what does, what does a return on investment mean for that employer? And how can we shrink that down from an entry level, from nine months to one year, down to three months? Because we surveyed a lot of, a lot of companies around the country this summer, and they really focused on retention, retention for an employee. And they said some of the best employees they have from a retention standpoint of view were criminal, people with criminal backgrounds, because they were looking to move up within an organization, not when it got to a certain point, to move out. And so, we said, "This is a prime opportunity to really focus on those, those growth, those growth tech companies here in the Baltimore region, as well as these mid, mid-level companies that, that need developers and need to test things." And so, that's what we're focused on, will be out there, April 2018, and we're looking to really develop partnerships that allow us to scale, because we have an opportunity to go down to Virginia and do the same thing in a rural environment, where we can start to control the narrative, where in urban and rural environment, and start to collect the data and show that there's really not much of a difference when it comes down to people and their environment, and really focus on the mindset of the individual, and hopefully produce quality products where if people come home, and it impacts their fears, their sphere of influence. And we define sphere of influence as your family, your block, your community, and your neighborhood, and we believe that anyone that comes through our program and our initiative will be eventually an asset and a multiplier in their community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Thank you for what you do. It is the council's custom to generalize the invocation. The motion has generalized the prayer. Motion by Councilman Schleifer, second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of generalizing the invocation, say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the general proceeding from October 30th, city council meeting is on the council member's desk.
The motion to approve the journal. Motion by Councilman Pinkett, second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of adopting the journal, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, and the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on pages two to three of the agenda. Bill to be introduced.
City Council Bill 17-0159, sale of property 1001 North Smallwood Street, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council Baltimore to sell to the public private sale, all its interests in certain property known as 1001 North Smallwood Street, and all in need of public use, and providing for, providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation Finance Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0160, sale of property 2120 West Lafayette Avenue, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council Baltimore to sell to the public private sale, all its interests in certain property known as 2120 West Lafayette Avenue, and all in need of public use, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation Finance Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0161, sale of property 2201 Mosher Street, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council Baltimore to sell to the public private sale, all its interests in certain property known as 2201 Mosher Street, and all in need of public use, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President, on behalf, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation Finance and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0162, sale of property Block 6254D, Lot 021, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council Baltimore to sell to the public private sale, all its interests in certain parts of land known as Block 6254D, Lot 021, and all in need of public use, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President, on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation Finance Economic Development Committee.
City Council 17-0163, Children and Youth Fund Interim Governance and Administration, for the purpose of establishing a temporary administrative structure for the Children and Youth Fund established by City Charter Article 1, Section 13, establishing methods and criteria for identifying specific programs and services eligible for funding by the fund, establishing methods and criteria for allocating available funds among eligible programs and services, providing for the expiration of the temporary law on July 1, 2019, allowing for one-year extension under certain circumstances, setting a special effective date, and generally relating to the administration of the Children and Youth Fund established by City Charter Article 1, Section 13. Sponsored President Young, Clark, Costello, Dorsey Henry, Milton, Bullock, Pinkett, Burnett, Cohen, Stokes, Sneed, Scott.
Thank you. I want to thank my co-sponsors. The Frederick Douglass quote that "It's easier to build strong children than to repair broken men" plays often in my mind. During the course of my time on the city council, I tried my best to put Douglass' quote into action. I've sometimes succeeded, but at other points, I have not. Early in my career, I thought it would be a good idea for Baltimore to follow the lead of San Francisco by dedicating a specific percentage of cities, of the city's budget toward proactive programs for children and youth. In 1991, a full five-year before I made my way to the Baltimore City Council, the Bay Area became a national model for property investing in youth by many San Francisco's charter and becoming the first city in the country to guarantee funding for children each year in the municipal budget. Baltimore, I thought at the time, could at least be second. Unfortunately, a succession, and I don't want to blame the mayors because it was their finance directors who didn't share my goals. Unfortunately, for, for that, as the years turned into decades, and as the percentage of money we spend each year on police and our youth climbed higher and higher, vocal and persistent citizens continue to cry foul about our city's out-of-whack budget priorities. And in 2015, everything changed. More people than not finally began to understand Douglass' proverbs and the wisdom in investing in our young. And some 21 years after an idealistic city council thought to follow the lead of a west-coast city that seemed to get it right for its children, Baltimore's government is finally ready to join the chorus of parents, students, teachers, mentors, and pastors, and put our money where our mouth have been. This process of establishing a dedicated Children and Youth Fund is groundbreaking for so many reasons. But one thing that I'm most proud of is the fact that, rather than politicians having to follow, to follow, say, the actual citizens of Baltimore, through a grassroots community engagement process, will be the ones deciding how dollars are spent. We've created a system that will have true citizen engagement baked in from the ground up, just as it should be. We have a long road ahead of us, but together, we have ushered in a new day that proves once and for all, to our most precious resources, our children, just how important they are to the future of our great city. And in my heart, I know that more Baltimoreans today know, deep down, what Douglass said so many moons ago. Baltimore, let's get to work on behalf of our children, and I want to thank our co-sponsors. And this has been assigned to the Education and Youth Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0164, zoning condition is conversion of a single-family dwelling into two-dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variances 2240 East Baltimore Street, for the purpose of permitting, such as certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling to two-dwelling units in the R8 zoning district on the property known as 2240 East Baltimore Street, as outlined in written in the company's plat, and granting variances from certain bulk regulations and certain off-street parking regulations. Sponsored Sneed.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0165, city property renaming Madison Park to the Nathan C. Erby Junior Park, for the purpose of changing the name from Madison Park, located at 1400 East Eager Street, to Nathan C. Erby Junior Park. Sponsored Stokes, President Young, Henry Bullock, Pinkett Burnett, Scott Cohen, Clark Sneed.
And please note that Council Vice President Milton, as a co-sponsor, chair-recognized Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
He back here.
Senator Erby, could you stand up, please? Erby, could you stand up, please? This gentleman was a postman first. He became, he was a postal, postman, he became a city council person, he became a state senator, and a lot of times, we don't recognize our leaders or people in our community after they passed away. So, Erby, I think you deserved this, and you served on the city council with Councilman Mary Pat Clark, so I just wanted to extend that to you. And on November the 7th, Senator Erby turned 86-years-old, so we want to say happy birthday to you.
I wanted to also echo the sentiment of Councilman Robert Stokes, where former city councilman, former Senator Nathan Erby has been an icon in our East Baltimore community for many, many years. You could always count on his office to be open almost every day, even on Sundays. People would come in and talk to him about problems that they had at his office on Biddle Street. And this is an honor that's befitting for a man who have given so much and have served the East Baltimore community. He not only served East Baltimore, he was a state senator that looked at the whole state and how he could make sure that the whole state understand that Baltimore is the heart of this city, I mean, heart of this state, and as go Baltimore, as go the state. And he created a lot of friendships throughout the years in Annapolis, where we're able to partner with some of those delegates and senators to help move Baltimore forward. So, Senator Erby, congratulations on the naming of this park after you, I think is well-deserved, and it should have been done a long time ago. So, congratulations. Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to congratulate my former seatmate. We sat over there, Burns, well, Burns, Clark, and Erby, one, two, three, on that back row, and we were great backbenchers together. The one thing my husband always reminds me about Senator and Councilman Nathan C. Erby is that, because my husband ran on that ticket too, before I ever got into politics, if you can imagine that day. And he always said, "Nathan Erby, he's a mail carrier. He knows the name of every person in every house in ZIP Code 13. He's gonna always win." And you know what? He always has. So, congratulations, because people know you know their name, and you know who they are, and care a lot about it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, this will be assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee, chaired by Chairman Costello. We're asking Chairman Costello to try to get this moving as quick as possible. Thank you. Okay, Chair-recognized Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I make my motion, I'm also going to take just a moment and pay a little homage to former Senator Erby. I did, I never had the honor of being seatmates with him, but I'm fairly, I'm fairly certain that the first campaign T-shirt I ever wore was an orange Erby team shirt, walking through the streets of East Baltimore back in the early 80s. So, and, and his district office was why you have a district office.
That's right.
So, Mr. President, I move suspension, to suspend the appropriate rule, so I can introduce a city council bill from the floor.
Second by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor of suspending rules to allow for introduction of this city council bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, the rules of suspending the bill can be introduced and will be City Council Bill 17-0166. The clerk will read the bill into the record.
City Council Bill 17-0166, York Road Retail Business District License Fees Reversion for, Reversion to annual collection, for the purpose of changing the semi-annual license fee collection period for the York Road Business Retail District to conform with the annual collection period applicable to all the retail business districts, clarifying and conform related provisions, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the operations of retail business districts. Sponsored Henry.
Chair-recognized Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. A year ago, I came in here, and we did legislation to change the collection of this fee from annual to semi-annual, with the hope that in the year to come, we would be able to create a business improvement district, and we were trying not to be in a situation where people were going to end up having to pay two fees for some portion of the year, but we've had a number of problems getting that business improvement district off the ground. So, we didn't want to put the, the GBA through the same problem of having slower collections over the course of the coming year, so we'd like to put it back, and they're okay with the fact that if we get a bid up and going, that they'll figure out how to get the money back to people. So, I want to thank the committee chair for agreeing to announce a hearing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee. Resolutions introduced.
City Council Resolution 17-0053, request, 0053R, request for federal action, preserve the historic tax credit, for the purpose of urging Congress and the president to continue the federal historic tax credit program. Sponsored as Henry, President Young, Costello, Pinkett, Dorsey, Bullock, Schleifer, Burnett, Scott, Cohen, Clark, Sneed, Milton, Stokes.
Chair-recognized Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The federal historic tax credit program has been responsible for rehabilitating 42,000 buildings, creating 2.3 million jobs, and investing $131 billion in private investment in communities around the nation, and it's scheduled to be repealed in the first draft tax reform bill that the Republicans have introduced in Congress. What people may not realize is Baltimore City is home to more structures on the National Register of Historic Places than any other city in the country. Since 2002, the credit has also incentivized the completion of over $500 million worth of projects right here in Baltimore City. It is by far the largest economic incentive for job creation, housing creation, and stimulating growth in Baltimore's tax base. In addition, one in five of the projects that use the historic property tax credit also use the affordable housing tax credit, which creates affordable housing here in Baltimore. This is an incredibly important issue for us, and as we discussed last week in the hearing on private, private development incentives, this is something that we need to be paying attention to also. So, I thank my co-sponsors for making this a, a strong statement from the Baltimore City Council, and I would like to move for a suspension of the rules to permit immediate adoption.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, the rules are suspended. Chair-recognized Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the favorable adoption of this resolution.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 17-0053R, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, this resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
Chair-recognized Councilman Burnett.
Mr. President, I would like to move to suspend the appropriate rules, so that I can introduce a city council resolution from the floor.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of suspending rules to allow for introduction of this city council resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, the rules are suspended, and the resolution can be introduced, and will be City Council Resolution 17-0054R. The clerk will read the resolution and to the record.
City Council Resolution 17-0054R, request for federal action, extend temporary protected status for Haitians, for the purpose to protect, for the purpose of urging the president and the acting secretary of Homeland Security to protect thousands of Haitians living in Maryland and nationwide through the extension of Haiti's temporary protected status designation beyond January 22, 2018. Sponsored Burnett.
Thank you. So, for those who, many know, I'm married into an Haitian family. I've visited Haiti several times, often annually, and my family was definitely deeply impacted by the earthquake of 2010 and several, the cholera outbreak and Hurricane Matthew. And so, the temporary protective status is very important for members of my family and other Haitian-American, Haitian-American, Haitian and Haitian-American families across the country, who really benefit from being able to come to this country, get access to resources and help, and also work with their, their family members here and abroad to maintain stability. And the country is also very much, it's still rebuilding from all of these disasters that they've experienced. So, this is a very personal issue for me, and really want to urge the president and the acting secretary of Homeland Security to extend protective status beyond January. It's typically been a 16-month extension every time, and this is a very short extension and could have a really big impact on immigrants, not only of Haitian, not only Haitian descent, but of other countries as well. So, I would like to thank my colleagues for your support, and move in this resolution for immediate adoption.
Second by Councilman Chairman, oh, co-sponsors, any co-sponsors? Okay, please note that, can I say all council people? Okay, I'm gonna go around and say, Councilman Stokes, Councilwoman Sneed, Councilwoman Clark, Councilman Bullock, Councilman Costello, Councilwoman, Council Vice President Milton, Councilman Schleifer, Councilman Pinkett, Councilman Henry, Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Scott. I didn't want to take nothing for granted. Okay. It's second by Chairman Bullock. All those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, the rules are suspended. Chair-recognized Councilman Burnett.
I'd like to move the resolution.
Second by Chairman Bullock. Okay, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 17-0054R, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, this resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Thank you all.
You can find the consent count in section A at the back of the agenda, is the motion approved, consent count. Motion by Councilwoman Clark, second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving the consent count, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, this count is approved, is approved. We'll now move the bills on second reader. Executive appointments committee.
EA 17-0084, Philip Lee, member, Environmental Control Board.
Chair-recognized Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held a hearing on November the 1st, 2017. I moved the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed. Please note that Councilman Scott is a pass.
EA 17-0086, Susan Francis, member, Commission for Aging and Retirement Education, District 3.
Chair-recognized Chairman Stokes.
I moved the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0087, Barbara Cornman, member, Commission for Aging and Retirement Education, District 14.
Chair-recognized Chairman Stokes.
Moved the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0089, Lloyd H. Buckner, member, Commission for Aging and Retirement Education, District 14.
Chair-recognized Chairman Stokes.
Moved the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0091, George Bunton, member, Civilian Review Board, District 7.
Chair-recognized Chairman Stokes.
I moved the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0092, Ebony Harvin, member, Civilian Review Board, District 10.
Chair-recognized Chairman Stokes.
I moved the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0093, Marcus Noel, member, Civilian Review Board, District 12.
Chair-recognized Chairman Stokes.
I moved the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Sneed, I mean Chairman Sneed. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0094, Betty Robinson, member, Civilian Review Board, District 14.
Chair-recognized Chairman Stokes.
I moved the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed. Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0026, Baltimore City Landmark List, exterior Chick Web Recreation Center, for the purpose of designating the Chick Web Recreation Center, 623 North Eden Street, as a historical landmark exterior.
Chair-recognized Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee heard this bill on November 3rd, 2017. There are amendments on your desks. I move the amendments favorable.
Second by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the bill is amended. Chair-recognized Chairman Bullock.
Yes, Mr. President, I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Chairman Stokes. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader. Chair-recognized Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to invoke Council Rule 12-1, to move the City Council Bill 17-0026 to third reader at the same meeting.
Second by Councilman, Chairman Stokes. All those in favor of advancing Council Bill 17-0026, the third reader at the same meeting, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried, and Council Bill 17-0026 is on third reader.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one two three, franchise bridgeway over Linden Avenue for the purpose of granting a franchise to Maryland General Hospital Inc. to construct, use, and maintain an elevated bridgeway that is to be located above and across Linden Avenue approximately two-hundred-sixty point seventeen feet north of the southern building line on the northern side of Madison Avenue to connect a proposed line, proposed new hospital building on the west side of Linden Avenue with the existing main hospital building on the east side of Linden Avenue, subject to certain terms, conditions, and reservations, and providing for a special effective date.
Chair recognize Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee heard this bill on October twenty-sixth, twenty-seventeen. There are amendments on your desks. I move the amendments favorable.
Second by Councilman Schleifer, all those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye. Those opposed nay. The motion is approved. This bill is amended. Chair recognize Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Schleifer, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Land use and transportation.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one zero zero, repeal of ordinance eleven dash five-seven-one, the District at Canton Crossing Plant New Development. For the purpose of repealing ordinance eleven dash five-seven-one is amended by ordinances twelve dash thirteen and twelve dash eight-six, which designated certain properties a business plant new development known as the District at Canton Crossing and providing for a special effective date.
Chair recognize Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee heard this bill on November eighth, twenty-seventeen. I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Cohen, all those in favor of adopting this bill, say aye. Those opposed nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one zero three, rezoning seventeen hundred West Forty-first Street for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as seventeen hundred West Forty-first Street as outlined in the company plat from the I-two zoning districts to the IMU zoning district.
Chair recognize Vice President Middleton.
The committee heard this bill on November eighth, twenty-seventeen. The finding of the facts have been distributed. I move the finding of the facts.
Second by Councilman Pinkett, all in favor of approving the finding of the facts, say aye. Those opposed nay. The motion is approved. Finding of the facts are adopted. Chair recognize Vice President Middleton.
I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Pinkett, all in favor of adopting this bill, say aye. Those opposed nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one zero four, zoning condition used tavern seventeen hundred West Forty-first Street for the purpose of renting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a tavern on the property known as seventeen hundred West Forty-first Street as outlined in the company plat.
Chair recognize Vice President Middleton.
The committee also heard this bill on November eighth, twenty-seventeen. The finding of the facts have been distributed. I move the finding of the facts.
Second by Councilman Pinkett, all those in favor of approving the finding of the facts, say aye. Those opposed nay. The motion is approved. The final facts are adopted. Chair recognize Vice President Middleton.
I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Pinkett, all in favor of adopting this bill, say aye. Those opposed nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Third reader requiring invocation of Rule twelve dash one for Sam Day advancement.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero two six, Baltimore City Landmark List, exterior Chick Web Recreation Center for the purpose of designating the Chick Web Recreation Center, six-two-three North Eden Street as a historical landmark exterior. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Milton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero seven three, Federal Hill Local Historic District for the purpose of designating the area located within certain boundaries of the Federal Hill Local Historic District and providing for a special effective date. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Milton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero nine four, sale of property NS Eastern Avenue underpass NWC Macon Street for the purpose of authorizing American City Council Baltimore to sell, either public or private sale, all its interests in certain property known as NS Eastern Avenue underpass NEC Macon Street, and only needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Milton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero nine nine, zoning condition used banquet hall, the second floor rear area and adjoining fenced and patio fifty-six oh four York Road for the purpose of renting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a banquet hall on the second floor rear area and adjoining fenced and patio when the property known as fifty-six oh four York Road is outlined in the company plat and providing for a special effective date. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Milton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one zero zero, Baltimore City Landmark List, exterior our Savior Lutheran Church for the purpose of designating our Savior Lutheran Church, thirty-three oh one, the Alameda as a historical landmark exterior.
What is it?
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one one zero, Baltimore City Landmark List, exterior our Savior Lutheran Church for the purpose of designating our Savior Lutheran Church, thirty-three oh one, the Alameda as a historical landmark exterior. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Milton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one two zero, property tax credit, public safety officers for the purpose of establishing a tax credit against the property tax imposed on the principal residences of certain public safety officers imposing certain limitations, conditions, qualifications for credit eligibility, providing for the amount, duration, administration of the credit, defining certain terms, providing for a special effective date, and generally linked to proper tax credit for qualified public safety officers.
Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move a floor amendment, which is on my colleague's desk, which requires the Department of Finance to prepare an annual written report to the mayor and city council detailing the number of public safety officers from each agency who have utilized the tax credit in the preceding year. Mr. President, we discussed this during the hearing and had agreement from all of our colleagues that we needed to get this in the bill so that the council could provide adequate oversight and stay up to date on the progress of the bill. At this time, I'd like to move the floor amendment.
Second by Councilwoman Snead, I mean Chairwoman Snead, all those in favor of approving the amendment, say aye. Those opposed nay. The motion is approved. The amendment is adopted. Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend Rule twelve dash three B to advance the bill to final passage.
Second by Chairwoman Snead, all those in favor of suspending the appropriate rules to move this bill to third reader, say aye. Those opposed nay. The motion is approved. This bill will be voted on.
President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry.
Who's enough? Please note Dorsey is enough.
Henry, Schleifer, Milton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved. The clearing of the bill status. The clearing of the bill status can be found on page eight of the agenda. Please inform our office in writing the bills that you would like removed from this list or email Kara Kuntz or see the Secretary of the Council if you have any of the bills you want removed or any that you want to stay on. Committee announcements. Chair recognize Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Thursday, November thirtieth, the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee will be hearing Bill seventeen zero one two seven, which is City Streets opening portion of a ten-foot alley between North Milton and Rose Street, and that's at two P.M. On that same day, at two oh one P.M., we'll be having a hearing City Council Bill seventeen zero one two eight, which is City Streets closing portion of ten-foot alley between North Milton and Rose Street. Two oh five P.M. the same day, the thirtieth, we will be hearing City Council Bill seventeen zero one three zero, City Streets closing Tawanda Avenue and a portion of Suffolk Avenue. Two ten P.M. on the thirtieth, Bill seventeen zero one three eight, which is City Streets closing ten-foot alley extending from the north side of Esther Place. Two fifteen P.M. on the thirtieth, we'll be having City Council Bill seventeen zero one three nine, City Streets closing North Arch Street, Vine Street, and Ryman Court. Also on the thirtieth, two sixteen P.M., we'll be having City Council Bill seventeen zero one four seven, City Streets opening North Arch Street, portion of Vine, and a portion of Ryman Court. Two twenty P.M. on the thirtieth, we'll have seventeen dash zero one four five, City Streets opening eight-foot alley extending from the east side of North Schroeder Street. Also on the thirtieth, two twenty-one P.M., we'll be having City Streets closing eight-foot alley extending from the east side of North Schroeder Street, which is City Council Bill seventeen zero one four six. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any more?
No, I think we're done.
Chair recognize Chairman Stokes.
The executive appointments committee will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November the fifteenth, beginning at ten A.M. to view the following nominations. David Zero, Marion Avens, John Seacott, Elizabeth Harbor, Earl Johnson, and Kirk Sommer.
Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget and Appropriations Committee will be holding a hearing tomorrow, Tuesday, November fourteenth, at one P.M. This is on Council Resolution seventeen dash zero 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 six R, funding for the consent decree between the Baltimore City Police Department and the United States Department of Justice. This is a voting session at the request of Councilman Scott. Tomorrow at one oh five P.M., the Budget and Appropriations Committee will be holding a hearing on Resolution seventeen dash zero 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 three R, which are quarterly budget briefings to discuss fiscal year two thousand seventeen closeout and the first quarter projections for fiscal year two thousand eighteen. Tomorrow at one ten P.M., the Budget and Appropriations Committee will be holding a hearing on Resolution seventeen dash zero 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 four R. This is a budget oversight hearing for Baltimore City Public Schools to discuss fiscal year two thousand seventeen closeout and the first quarter projections for fiscal year two thousand eighteen. Mr. President, I'd like to move to suspend Rule ten dash two to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Bullock, all those in favor, Chairman Bullock, all those in favor of suspending rules announcing hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carried. Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Tuesday, November twenty-eighth, at ten oh five A.M., the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will be holding a hearing on Bill seventeen dash zero one six five, city property renaming Madison Park to Nathan C. Erby Junior Park. That's at the request of Councilman Stokes. Mr. President, I'd like to move to suspend Rule ten dash two to announce a hearing.
Second by Council Vice President Middleton, all those in favor of suspending rules announcing hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The motion carried. Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Tuesday, November twenty-eighth, at ten ten A.M., Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will be holding a hearing on Bill number seventeen dash zero one six six. That is the York Road Retail Business District, license fees reversion to annual collection at the request of Councilman Henry. And lastly, Mr. President, I'd like to remind my colleagues that on that same day, we will be holding a hearing at ten A.M. Ordinance city property naming the building informally known as the Mecue Building to the Councilman Harry S. Cummings Building at the request of Councilman Costello. And at ten fifteen A.M. on that same day, we will be hearing Bill seventeen dash zero one four four, ordinance discounted city services and equipment for nonprofit events at the request of Councilwoman Clark. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any more committee announcements on the side? Committee announcement. Chair recognize Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear City Council Bill seventeen dash oh one four one this Thursday, November sixteenth, twenty-seventeen, at ten thirty A.M. It's the right-of-way release for municipal utilities and services through the former bed of Jordan Street.
Chair recognize Councilman Scott. I mean Chairman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, on December the twelfth, at four P.M., the council will have a hearing for City Council Resolution seventeen dash zero zero four seven R, and that's a calling for expansive auxiliary police program in Baltimore. Also, Mr. President, on November the twentieth, at the request of yourself and several of my council members, we're going to have a legislative oversight hearing for Baltimore nine-one-one system at two thirty P.M., immediately before the police redistricting hearing for the purpose of having the Baltimore Fire Department, Police Department, Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, and all information information technology to provide an update on the city's nine-one-one system amidst continuing complaints from the citizens about the system. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognize Chairman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to suspend Rules ten dash two and ten dash three to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor of suspending rules announcing, say aye. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The motion carried. Chair recognize Chairman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to announce the Education and Youth Committee hearing on Tuesday, November twenty-first, at five thirty P.M. at Frederick Douglass High School. That's seventeen dash zero one six three, Children and Youth Fund Interim Governance and Administration. Mr. President, as you said at the beginning of this council meeting, this is historic legislation that you have brought forward. I want to recognize Mr. John Brothers, who's here, who's a part of the instrumental part of the task force that put this, helped put this legislation together, as well as your staff, Miles and Lester Davis and Kara, as well as some young people that are here. If you guys could stand up from the intersection. Before, I was a council member. Before joining this illustrious body here, I worked with this program, The Intersection, where we taught, just like you said, Mr. President, young people to be strong leaders in our communities. And these young people were instrumental in supporting this legislation and in advocating for the passage and then the override of the mayor's veto in the previous city council. So they've done a tremendous amount of lift, and I'm very proud that they're still here and they're still fighting for this legislation. And they will be joining with several other young leaders from around the city on November twenty-first at four P.M. at the Kids Safe Zone in Santown Winchester for a historic youth march over to Frederick Douglass High School. But again, I want to thank you, Mr. President, for your leadership, as well as the young people of The Intersection who have carried this message all the way through. So thank you.
Committee announcements. Regular announcements. You got a regular announcement? Okay, I'm first. I'd like to say happy belated birthday to Councilman Ryan Dorsey. His birthday was on November the twelfth. So happy birthday to you. Also, I'd like to say happy birthday to Councilman Eric Costello. His birthday is on November the twenty-third. So let's say happy birthday. I would ask the council choir to sing, but I know you all didn't have your rehearsal, so I'm not going to ask you to sing. Happy birthday to both of our colleagues, unless you want to.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to Chris Costello and Dorsey. Happy birthday to you and many more. Okay. Regular announcement. Chair recognize Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank my colleagues.
You also didn't do that for the mayor.
I just want to thank my colleagues for supporting the Chick Web, making it a historic landmark. I also want to thank CHAP. I also want to thank my Chairman of Housing Urban Affairs. Also, thank PLAN. But I want to thank Change for Real and the Dumb Ball Coalition. Could you stand up for being very supportive? Is he still here? Okay, he left. Well, I just want to thank them for... Okay. Well, thank you.
Announcement, regular announcement. Chair recognize Councilman Scott. Why do that? Is this mic on?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm used to people trying to cut my voice out.
Oh, we don't do that in here. We don't do that in here.
I'm just playing. I rise simply to ask, on a somber note, to ask that Councilwoman Middleton honor a moment of silence for the now three hundred and five homicide victims in Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you. Regular announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello. Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for a neighbor of mine who lived two blocks from me. Her name was Lane Burke. She was eighty-nine years old. Lane was a lifelong civil rights advocate, and I'm not going to go through her entire biography because I could be here for an hour. But if I would say one piece of her biography that stands out, that really tells you a lot about her, her husband passed away back in the early eighties. Lane joined the Peace Corps at the age of seventy-one and went to Africa for a few years. So she was truly committed to bettering people's lives, whether it was here in Baltimore or in the state of Maryland, or in the country, or across the world. So Lane will be dearly missed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I just want to do a moment of silence for Mr. Richard Skip Barbie, who passed away, who was a strong advocate in East Baltimore. And we were very fortunate because just named the park after Senator Erby. When he was in his house, we actually had a street name and showed him the sign, which is good, and he passed away the next day. So that was very unfortunate, but I want a moment of silence for Mr. Richard Skip Barbie.
Thank you. I want to ask the Vice President not to forget all of the many people who have died from the opioid crisis in the city of Baltimore. We need to include them too, because if you look at the number of people who have died from opioids, I think it far outweighs some of the other deaths that we have talked about. I want to recognize Paul. This is Paul's last council meeting as the reading clerk and as my legislative assistant. Paul has been an asset to this office since he joined in two thousand and fourteen. This last week with us, as he is moving on to pursue a new opportunity, and in recognition of his service to the city, I would like to present Paul with this resolution, and it Stand up, Paul. It reads the City Council.
I didn't know about this beforehand, so I have to read this a little bit slower. The City Council Baltimore Resolution, be it hereby known to all that the City Council Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Paul B. Plymouth in recognition of your dedicated service to the city of Baltimore and the Baltimore City Council. The entire membership extends its best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution to be presented on the thirteenth day of November twenty seventeen. By Council President Young and all members. And this is how I read in actual speed, not the...
Congratulations, Paul. I want to really thank Paul. Paul has been, like I said, an asset to the office. Paul will keep you in stitches, if you don't know it. You know, he's going to be really missed. He's going to another entity that's going to pay him way more than what we get here, because some of our city workers, some of the lowest paid around City Hall. And Paul, I want to thank you for your great service. And I was doing this because I'm going to miss that, because y'all hear that? That's what Paul do, he was doing every time he was reading, I would say, stop it. You drive me nuts, stop it. So I did it while he was reading, so he can understand what I was going through. But we're going to miss you, Paul. But like I always tell anybody that ever worked at City Hall, you're a part of this family, you're always welcome to come back at the City Hall. As long as I'm president, you're welcome. And we look forward to you having a great career in your next endeavor. And just don't forget us. Bring doughnuts. Okay, Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, December fourth, 2017, and I'd like to request a moment of silence for Lane Burke, Richard Skip Barbie, all of the, all of the family members that have suffered deaths through the opioid crisis in Baltimore City, and also the families, the three hundred and five families that
Thank you. There being no further business, this concludes the twenty-second meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.